All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 25, 2025 meeting of the North Attleboro Town Council. Please join me in the pledge of reasons.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome new council members as well for your first time at an actual, at the desk. I know we had a brief meeting remotely a couple of weeks ago, but this is, this is the first one that counts. And it's a fun one, too, because later in the night, we're going to do our goal-setting session for the last hour or so, so that should be, should be fun. So let's get right into it. Approval of the minutes. Town Council minutes, June 23rd. Sorry.
I had moved to approve the town council minutes of June 23rd, 2025.
Second. Got a motion from Mr. LaPointe, a second from Mr. Costello. Sorry, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Are there any abstentions?
Uh, me.
I have three abstentions. All nine of us here? Six, zero, three. It passes. All right. Next up?
I move to approve the town council minutes of July 9th, 2025.
Check. I have a motion from Mr. LaPointe, a second from Mr. Costello. Sorry, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Just one abstention. That motion passes. Eight, zero, one. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to town councilor community announcements. Are there any announcements from town councilors?
I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up. Thank you. I just want to remind folks that are listening that we still have a limit on non-essential water use, but that remains in place. And I'm very concerned about the reports of increased coyote activity, so please watch those little pets out there. And then lastly, we should mention there's a ceremony in remembrance of the, of 9/11 that's coming up on, oh, 9/11, it's a Thursday, right? It's actually on the, I think it's actually on the 11th. It's a Thursday, yeah, at 9 o'clock at the high school, so.
Thank you. Swager, three minutes. Mr. LaPointe?
Uh, just one thing. Just wanted to acknowledge the fact that school starts this week, and in support of that, the town council came together and made a donation to the North Attleboro Public School staff, um, uh, welcome back raffle. Uh, so we, uh, we gave a couple of gift certificates over to the public schools to recognize some staff members, so I wanted to thank my fellow councilors for contributing to that.
Thank you, Mr. LaPointe. I know the teachers were back probably last week a little bit. I know they're officially back today. Students are back on Wednesday, so I want to wish everybody a good start to the school year, for sure. Anyone else? All right, that's, that's it for town councilor community announcements. Move on to the town manager report. Mr. Borg?
Uh, council president, members of the council, a couple of items for you that may have your interest. It's been a while since we met last, and so there's a couple of notes here, so bear with me. One, we're still tracking hurricane season. You know, we just had Hurricane Eric and Hurricane Aaron pass by off the coast, but we're still monitoring that as we go through. There's another storm that's out there, so we'll be keeping you posted on any potential impacts on our areas. Looking at communications and community events, um, we were able to, this, uh, record a couple of town manager episodes on North TV. We also did a couple podcasts, uh, recordings that brought some folks in, talked about the town beaches. As you recall, the town beaches were open, they were closed, they were open, they were closed, uh, bacteria, algae count, uh, that thing. So we had a great discussion, talked about that. I appreciate Steve Carvalho and Anne Marie Fleming coming in for that. Uh, we're continuing to push on media on all different platforms of everything from the town sign to social media, the website, and our highway billboards. A couple of key engagements that took place since we met last. Now, we did have Senator Edward Markey come in for a visit, a quick, um, one-hour, uh, get-to-know-North-Attleboro tour. We hit three specific sites. We went to the Webster Mill project, uh, we went to a 10-mile-river location, and then we went to 451 Elm. Uh, we really, uh, brought the 10-mile-river to Senator Markey's attention, want, you know, working really hard to have him become an advocate, uh, and a sponsor of potential solutions. I know we're working very closely with Mark Holwell and Public Works on a dredging plan. Uh, we're going to push on Senator Markey for additional help as we take on, you know, more improvements along the 10-mile-river. A second meeting was held actually the same day and actually the same time, and I was unable to attend with Congressman Auchincloss's, uh, team to talk about opioid, um, settlement funding expenditures. The town has a opioid, uh, task force that we put together that deals with how to distribute and manage the, the funding that we have for all the opioid, uh, settlements that have come in. To date, we have about $700,000 that we've received in town. The police chief is out, uh, right now, uh, taking in applications for the co-response worker, uh, clinician that will be funded by this. We've also started an application for, uh, folks that are coming out of recovery and need assistance, uh, working real close with the Board of Health, Anne Marie, and everybody on that and how we do that. We're also working, uh, on something what I would call left-of-bang, which is trying to get left of an event and trying to solve problems before it happens, taking the opioid task force funding and working with the Hockamok YMCA and potentially coming up with a program this summer, uh, to provide a complete year's worth of YMCA, uh, funding and their attendance at the Y, focused on opioid, um, abuses, uh, information about how to prevent different things. So we're still trying to hammer the details on that, but that looks very promising, so we'll keep you posted and updated on that one as well. Uh, we are scheduled to hold the annual planning conference with our department heads this Wednesday. Uh, we will take the, um, priorities and the objectives that you outlined this evening, and we'll crosswalk those with the department heads on, uh, Wednesday into programs and tasks and actions. Uh, so when you get on the, the stickies in the market board tonight, uh, we'll take that and then turn that into actionable items, and we'll keep you updated on that. So that's one of the big, big takeaways that we take away from, uh, your meeting tonight. Uh, we're also, as a part of our opioid, uh, settlement funds, sponsoring some NORCAN training, uh, through the SAFE Coalition. They're coming here, and we will begin training, uh, different, uh, town employees as well as residents. And we've actually focused on bringing in, um, the businesses and vendors where a lot of the overdoses take place, uh, and because they're going to be the first people on the scene, and if we provide them training with how to use NORCAN, that's potentially a life that we could save when that happens. So we're inviting, there'll be trainings throughout the year, and we'll keep you updated on that, but you have the two dates there. We did talk about September 11th, uh, Council Wagner did mention that. There are actually two ceremonies, uh, for that. One is in conjunction with the schools. That will be our primary ceremony. That'll take place at 9:00 AM on the high school athletic field. Uh, the second one will be with the firefighters in San Antonio. We'll, uh, continue the program on the Baptist Common. Right now, we're targeting 11, uh, AM for that second ceremony. Uh, more to follow as we work with Chief Coleman to get that update, but we will be having to, and hope that you will be able to make it to both of those. Farmer's Market going strong. Uh, we were able to bring in, uh, a new vendor into the, uh, went through the licensing board, the Beer Gardens now, so Engel Tree has a presence at the Farmer's Market, so we're really happy to see that. Block Party's coming up, scheduled for 17th September, 5:00 to 8:00 PM. And we will hold a boards, commissions, and committees, uh, quarterly meeting update as we kick off, you know, as we end the first quarter and start the second quarter. That'll be on 8 October at 7:00 PM. We do that on teams, and we invite all the chairs of all of our different boards, committees, and commissions to attend that. And that'll be a good follow-up because we'll share the information from those objectives that you lay out this evening, and then how the departments are crosswalking it, and how we can cooperate with all of them. All right, this evening, John and Bobby are here. Gentlemen, stand up, please. Uh, just really want to call the council's attention to John and Bobby. Uh, you met them last year, and they, uh, took off and started a senior, uh, technology assistance program. Uh, this has been a huge success. This is year two. They're back again. They had eight people today?
Yes.
And their focus was how to use AI, artificial intelligence. Uh, and did I get that right? Is that the topic you guys talked today? Perfect, cool. But this is actually gaining traction. This is seeing a lot of ground covered. We've had, and Deb, why don't you tell me? You know, I don't need to tell, go ahead, real quick.
I had a library director reach out to me, I want to say Matt Appoisit? No, Matt Appoisit, and ask, could they come and bring their workshop to her library? I mean, it's, 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 it's a need. They are really needing a need.
So again, we just want to recognize them again this year and say thank you. Uh, while we have them, I think they're both seniors this year, correct? So, uh, we need to get everything out of them while they're still here.
Nice job, yes.
And appreciate it. Thank you.
Next question. Next question. Are you guys training any juniors or sophomores to take up? Any, anyone kind of coming up behind you guys that could, could continue the program after you guys are, are graduated? Is that on your mind?
Yeah, we, um, we have a lot of volunteers from the high school itself, like freshmen, sophomores, juniors. And so basically, when we graduate, we want to be able to have this be a running program in the high school so that it doesn't, like, it keeps going.
That's fantastic. Awesome. Thank you. Good job.
Okay, looking at some operational and economic items. Again, apologize for the long report. It's been a while since we've been together. Webster Mill update. As you've seen around the Webster Mill, there's a lot of activity going on. The EPA is there. Uh, they have taken down the entire site, and they're beginning the debris removal. There is active air monitoring going on right now. Uh, this could run, and they're approved to up to $4 million, uh, worth of work here at the town. Uh, it will lead into an item that you're going to see on your agenda tonight, which is the EPA revolving loan fund. Uh, this is the next step. We've gone from a, a blighted property that had stood with no activity in attention for 40 years, on the verge of collapse. We made it safe. We were able to now bring in the EPA, do the cleanup, to the tune of almost $4 million. The next step you'll start talking about tonight, which will be to clean, uh, the soil that there, the contamination, and get rid of that, so we can take this property and get it back onto the market and then back onto the tax rules. So we're happy to see that happening. Uh, I'm going to turn it over.
Could I ask, could we ask one more question here? Sorry.
Sure. No problem.
As we're coming, there's a lot of, Mr. LaPointe?
Thanks. Sorry. Um, I noticed that there's some additional work on the adjacent streets. Looks like sidewalk work. Is that related to the cleanup, or is it just coincidental?
It's coincidental.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Perfect. I'm going to turn the next one over to Cheryl Smith to talk about Sheldonville Road. This, as you recall in one of our last meetings, uh, we asked for the authority to resolve an issue with a quitclaim deed, and you empowered us to do that. I'd just like to ask Cheryl to brief us out on that. Yep, please come up here. That would, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hey, good evening, Cheryl. Cheryl.
Um, back in 2002, um, was when the lots were created down on Sheldonville Road. And if I remember correctly, they had put, um, little lots out in front of the ones on Sheldonville to keep for future sidewalk. That was something they were doing back then. And there were several deed transfers, and, uh, through no fault of whatever, um, they didn't get transferred properly. So there was a confirmatory deed back in '17 from the original owner to, um, sorry, from the original owner to the town, and then a deed from the original owner to the newer owners, who happened to be related, um, conveying just the house. So the end result is now they just need to record a deed to clear up the title because of all the errors in the transfer of the title. The final deed from KP Law just needs to be recorded so that it can clear up the title for the new people that are there.
So as a result-
And we are assessing it properly.
So as a end result, we will clear that up and have the deed as appropriate as it was originally intended to do. So that would be the result of the decisions that we'll make, uh, to support that, and KP Law's finding on it.
All right. Thanks for closing the loop on that one.
Is the net, so the net outcome is the town will own the, the sidewalk, uh, allowance piece of the property, and the homeowners will own?
I think this strip is going back to the homeowners, if I remember.
Back to the homeowners.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it will go back to the homeowners.
Because they never, they have, they've never done the sidewalks up yet, to this point.
Will it continue to be subdivided as two lots?
Uh, we're assessing them together, so they have the house lot and a separate lot, but they get one bill for the two lots.
Okay. Thanks.
On the next item, um, a few months back, I received a briefing from the owners of a lot at 15 John Deitch Boulevard. This lot, uh, was where the old Answer Fitness used to be. It was razed and it was cleared. Uh, the owners of the property had submitted and went before the planning board and had approval for a warehouse. Uh, those were approved, and at the, they could not sell it. They could not sell the warehouse space. Uh, there looks to be a, a glut in the market of warehouse space. There's a similar property in Foxborough of similar square feet that is at a standstill. No, no tenants in it whatsoever. So the owners opted not to follow through with their, um, development of a warehouse. They came in and asked for, uh, what we thought. We told them we'd love to see more businesses in there, you know, develop it. It's in the industrial park, but they would like to do housing. So they gave us a housing proposal for this property. Uh, of about 300 potential units in that area. It's a very significant-sized lot. It's across the street from Shaw's and Town Tavern, so if, if you're right in that general area, uh, it seems to make sense on the initial glance, uh, but what I'd like to have from the council, if the council would be willing, is a referral to the bylaw subcommittee to take a look at this potential development and see where it might, uh, go. And if the developers would like to come in and outline what their vision for it, have that go through, uh, the bylaw and come back and see if there's anything worthwhile in doing this. Uh, it's nothing I can do at my level. They could submit an applica, they could, they could 40B the town, uh, with it. I mean, but currently, we are in safe harbor until March of next year. The current permit from the, uh, 40R at John Deitch, uh, would give us 12 months of safe harbor until March of next year, they pulled that permit. So that's when it would, we would become eligible to have a 40B. That's not what they've talked or discussed, I'm just saying that in a way, but I'd like to have the conversation with the bylaw, uh, subcommittee because that would potentially be, maybe there's a referral to the planning board as a result of this.
So what are, what are you asking us to refer?
Just a, a discussion on development opportunities at 15 John Deitch, and any zoning impacts.
I move to refer, uh, the opportunity to have a discussion with the developers at 15 John Deitch about their plans and potential impact to the bylaw study committee.
Second. All right, I have a motion to refer, uh, the conversation from Mr. LaPointe, a second from Mr. Donovan. Uh, starting discussion on the referral. Mr. Gold?
Yeah, thank you. I'm just confused, um, is there a specific bylaw they would be looking for, or would it be more appropriate for, say, Economic Development Committee to discuss?
It could go to Economic Development Council, Gold, but there, we saw it because there might be a change in the, because it's in a C-60 zone is where they're looking at. So have the discussion with, um, bylaw, get an overview of the concept, potentially come back and refer it to the planning board, uh, if there's interest.
Could make a motion to refer to both if we want to after.
It could be both.
Donovan?
Is this the same developer that's doing the Kelly Boulevard project?
The owners are not the same.
But the developer-
But there is discussions with that developer as well.
Partners, yeah. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right, so I have a motion and a second to refer the conversation, the topic to bylaw. Uh, we had a potential idea to refer it to Economic Development. If anybody wants to make an amendment, they can. Otherwise, I'll take, I'll just do the vote on the, as it was stated.
I'm sorry, Mr. Donovan's the chair of bylaw?
Yes.
Correct.
What's your opinion about taking that in to do an initial review of, do you feel right about that in bylaw?
Yeah, I, it sort of makes sense, especially if we're going to need to rezone it, but I could see where Economic Development would have a hand in that, too. So I don't object to a general referral, or if you want to give us first pass, and then we could refer it from us to Economic Development, too. That would work as well. Probably, might be better not to have two different discussions going on at the same time.
Right.
I agree.
Maybe one to the other.
Yeah.
That probably makes more sense.
Yeah. Is there, from a time perspective, is it okay for it to cycle once, come back, cycle back?
I think you have plenty of opportunity and time here. There's nothing that is making this pressing.
Just a conversation right now.
It's a conversation right now.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we'll, uh, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the referral, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes nine, zero. It's referred.
Okay, quick update on, uh, 451 Elm Street. Uh, just want to say thanks again to, uh, the Assistant Town Manager, Tony Morbido. Uh, he's been doing Herculean work at that building and working with our OPM and the construction company that's out there now, uh, trying to move this along. Uh, we are overdue from the original contract that we had, uh, agreed to with the, the construction company and the construction manager. Uh, they're now picking up the pace and moving forward. Uh, we are going through a number of different issues as we go along. Uh, scribble time remains a, a tenant. We have look, the need to potentially, well, we do have the need, not to potentially, but we have the need to sprinkler the building, and that, you authorized funding through the CIP program last year, so we're trying to tie that all together. But we're marching towards a November 30th. We thought we would be earlier, but November 30th, um, and that coincides with the Santa Parade and the leftover turkey trot. Can you see we're trying to line up a couple of things here, um, to mutually support, but we think we'll do the opening ceremony. Uh, Senator Markey, uh, was extremely impressed with this and our partnership with the Hockamok YMCA, uh, and would like to be invited back for that opening, as well as the Bristol County advisors, where the vast majority of the funds for this came from, and that was through our, um, ARPA funding from Bristol County. We started our 250 celebration kickoff meeting, uh, for the signing of the Declaration of Independence. Uh, 250 years next, 4th of July. Uh, we started talking with Kids' Day. Uh, there's some issues right now with Kids' Day, so we're, but we're talking about it because of the planned construction at the school. We're trying to ascertain a good place to do fireworks right now. Uh, we were looking at a site today, didn't look like it was going to work out, but we'll keep moving that, we'll keep you updated on that. Continue to move along with the school building committee. Uh, invoices are coming in. Right now, there's no plan, uh, to go to bonding until January of next year. The town has sufficient reserves to be out of its daily, uh, cash flow and operations to be able to fund, uh, the needs of the school building committee. So as we get those invoices, current invoices are coming in about $850,000 a month, uh, right now for that project, so we'll turn that back into a bond, uh, in January and pay ourselves back, uh, from that, and we will begin to borrow what we need. We're not going to borrow the 180 million all at once, but we'll borrow sufficient for a year, and that's why it will take probably, um, four to five years for that $1,000 approximate value that we saw the impact to be fully implemented. It won't happen in one year, it'll probably take four or five years to ramp up. Uh, had a meeting with the North Attleboro, uh, Board of Electric Commissioners. Uh, great meeting, uh, very positive outcome. Uh, talked about the ability to, uh, create and manage the opportunity fund with NAD. This is a huge success. We have an agreement in place where it would be in lieu of a pilot payment, so I guess it would be a Pi-Lop, so, um, but it's a, essentially a payment that, where we leverage approximately $14 million of their cash reserves, and the town gets the interest that we earn off of that. Currently, we're earning anywhere between $600 and $750,000 a year from that instrument, based on a $14 million, uh, instrument that we're managing for them. Their pilot payment in the past was around 350 to 375, as high as 390. So as you can see by coming to an agreement with them, we were able to secure a larger pilot equivalent. Excuse me. Already talked about the co-response health clinician earlier, right? Uh, some good news, um, financial matters. We did receive a $1.5 million grant from the Mass Gaming Commission, uh, for the work on Kelly Boulevard. That now moves the total of grant funding received for that project to $5.5 million, plus the additional, uh, $500,000 that we received a check for from, uh, the developer, Marcus Partners. Uh, you also have a measure in your, uh, packet tonight that we're going to ask for a referral, but to allow Mark to spend that directly versus letting it fall to free cash and getting it, uh, a year or so later. And then today, uh, in the mail, it's always fun to open up, you know, the FedEx packages when they came in, when it's a check for, uh, 1.152 million dollars. Uh, again, thanks to Mark Holwell and the work. This is not the last of these checks, but this is for our PFAS settlement funding, uh, through our attorneys. Uh, and again, you'll see another measure asking you to let this money go directly into a fund that will be able to support, uh, Public Works and spend it instead of waiting for that to fall to free cash and become available. We have PFAS needs today that Mark can use this for, and this would give him the power and the opportunity to spend it. You see the, uh, employment opportunities in the update? I apologize for the length of this one. I'm sure when we meet again in a couple of weeks, it'll be shorter, but I'll, uh, answer any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Borg. Are there any questions for the town manager?
Just one question, Mike. Circling back to the 250th celebration.
Yes.
I was watching the historical commission meeting, uh, maybe a month ago, and they've been working with, uh, the National Park Service, I think it is, to put up signs for the, the George Washington route from Yorktown. The organization that's behind that has designated a number of towns as, uh, eligible to be called victory towns, and North Attleboro is one of them. Have we looked into what it would take to get that designation? Because it would seem like that would tie in very well to the 250th-
Absolutely.
And actually lead up for enough for the next seven years, I think, if I remember my American history right. Uh, it'd be 250th right up through the 250th of Yorktown, so, uh, that might be worth, something worth looking into.
We, we have received communication from them, and we're looking to, what we're doing is getting now the committee together, and we're going to pitch this to the committee and see what their involvement and how they want it. So this is all starting to come together now. Um, and if anybody's out there that's interested in being part of this committee, uh, we welcome your input and help celebrate the 250th of the Declaration of Independence.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? All right, we'll move on. Thanks, Mr. Borg.
You bet.
Next up, we have resident and community comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council this evening? Ms., uh, Ms. Clarnor, why don't you go first?
I try not to use my cane. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Marie Clarnor. Um, I'm saying that because most of you know me, but some of you don't. I have, uh, lived here for 50 years, and I have served the town as a volunteer for 40 years. I spent 23 years on the Conservation Commission. I spent 32 years as a representative town meeting member, which I was elected to. I spent nine years on the concert, on the, uh, planning board, elected the first two times, appointed the last time in 2022. I brought a lot of life experience to all of these positions. I know it may sound funny to those of you who know me, but I've been a medical assistant. I worked in a lumberyard. I was a secretary to the owners and crew of the 12-meter yacht Intrepid for the America's Cup races. I, uh, taught, actually, for over 40 years, 26 years here. If you add all those up instead of overlapping, then that means that I've given 90 years to the town. to the town. That would be kind of funny, because I'm not that old. But I have a bachelor's degree in mathematics. I have a master's degree in administration. I've taken finance classes, law classes, planning classes, wetlands classes, zoning and land use. I have a Level 2 certificate from the Citizens Planners Training Collaborative. I am still the Planning Board's representative to Serpent, Southeast Regional Planning and Economic Development District. I am chair of their commissioners. I am chair of the Finance Committee there. I am vice chair of the Southeastern Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is part of Serpent, which deals with awarding funds for tip projects, transportation projects. I am vice chair of the Regional Economic Strategy Committee. I am co-chair of the Environmental Committee, which I am happy to say I introduced to the commission during this past year, and they voted unanimously to establish it. And its purpose is to take a look at environmental issues from a regional standpoint. My specific focus was the Ten Mile River, because the Ten Mile River doesn't start and end in North Attleboro. We are also working with Rhode Island and other communities that are outside of our region. We are also in that committee focusing on Buzzards Bay, because the issues on Buzzards Bay as well with pollution do not originate from most of the towns on Buzzards Bay, but they all have to live with the consequences. You don't know this, because I'm so much older than you are, but way before Keep North Attleboro Beautiful organized their cleanups, which are wonderful, the Conservation Commission started river cleanups back in the 1990s, and we served as a model for other communities, including Attleboro. While on the Conservation Commission, and as part of that move to clean up the waterways in North Attleboro, I worked with the then-highway superintendent, Gene Allen, and we filed a permit with DEP and obtained a permit to clean out every waterway in North Attleboro. It was considered a maintenance permit and was renewable every five years. Unfortunately, to the best of my knowledge, that permit was not renewed after I left the Conservation Commission. When I said that I've been doing this for 40 years, I want you to understand that I brought all of my experience and all of my time to the town for 40 years. I had two children. I came to meetings in a wheelchair. I came to meetings in a walker. I came to meetings in a wheelchair and a boot. I went to the planning board meeting a week after my husband's funeral. I wore this shirt on purpose. A friend of mine's son runs marathons, and he ran the London Marathon. And to me, doing work and service for the town is a marathon. It's not a sprint, it's not a real short connection, "Yeah, I'll give you a year and then I'm gone." I've chosen to give you 40 years. On June 23rd, the town manager called me in the afternoon. We had planned phone take during the day, and he told me that my name was up for reappointment to the planning board that night, but that he was concerned because he had heard that a couple of members of this council would not vote for me. I asked why, and the town manager told me that because they thought that I was not in line with the vision for the town. So, upon his recommendation, I said, "Okay, go ahead, take my name off the list tonight." And he told me that he would put my name up for reappointment at the first meeting of the new town council. I believed that. So, I didn't realize, but when I watched the meeting that night, I realized that in line with the vision of the town, I told him at the time that I thought that was a made-up reason, because I haven't done anything that's not in line with the vision of the So, I sent a letter to all of you indicating that I was confused, because as far as I knew, I didn't get reappointed. Then I got a letter saying that I was reappointed, "Go get sworn in." Well, when I heard nothing back from anyone, I consulted a municipal law attorney and said, "What do I do?" And they advised me to go get sworn in, take my letter and go get sworn in. And I thought, "Well, I don't know about that." Took me a while, finally did. But then I got a letter, which I'm assuming you got from Mr. Borg, saying that that letter was sent out by mistake, and that he wouldn't be nominating me for the planning board. So, I went to the planning board just as a resident back in August and watched it and left. And ordinarily, I learned a long time ago, don't ever expect anybody to say thank you. When people put that phrase in one of those "I don't want you" letters, they say, "Thank you for your service," and we all know what that really is. You lose my connections, which have been hard-earned for 40 years. I know more engineers than most of you know. I know many more attorneys than you know. I know many more developers than you know. I've gotten lots of phone calls from people that know me, saying, "Marie, what's going on?" And I have kept my mouth shut and said, "I'm not really sure." So, finally, I decided that I would come here today during the community comment period, because I have the right to speak as a resident, to say, "I'm really disturbed that no one said to me, 'Hey, Marie, I don't like,' and I'm talking about the councillors, 'I don't like the way you voted on Kelly Boulevard.'" Well, we had many, many, many meetings with Marcus Partners. I was the one initially who said, "Have them come in for a pre-application workshop, sit down, talk about what they want to do, and work it out." We did. Meeting started, and when it came time to iron out the special conditions for the project, which have the force of law, every time we asked for something, they pushed back and said, "That's not in the development agreement we signed with the town. We already paid this kind of money. We already did this." And I had asked them from the very beginning, during the workshops, before they filed, I asked something very simple. I said, "Can you try and do something special? Do something interesting with the entrance? Do something interesting with the buildings? Do something that makes people drive by and say, 'Oh, you know what? That looks interesting. I want to check that out.'" But when it came time, all we heard about was how much money they'd already paid, how much money they were going to be paying, and that they didn't have to. So, the night that it came down to the vote, I had told the public many, many times during the hearings that no one on the planning board really has the right to say no. If a project conforms to the law, whether it's state law or local law, you can't say no just because you don't like something. So, the night came to the vote, they needed three votes. They got three votes. So, when it came time for me to vote, I told them that as a person, as a resident of the town, if I had the ability to vote, I would say no. And it was because they wouldn't do any of the simple things and never gave any reason other than, "Not part of the agreement. We already paid money." Okay, that's fine. And then, as a member of the planning board, I abstained. It's also been told to me, and I don't know how true this is, but I was told that the other reason was because of my attitude about rezoning Allen Avenue School to C-60. Well, the town planner brought to the planning board, said that the town manager wanted him to discuss rezoning it to C-60. And those of you who know me know that I'm not shy. I generally speak up for myself and tell my opinion. I'm not, I never ask anybody to agree with me. I just don't have a problem saying what I think. Because I never worked for the Board of Selectmen. I didn't volunteer my time for you. I didn't volunteer my time for the town manager. I volunteer my time for the residents of North Attleboro. I wasn't born here. My mother was. My husband was. And I love this town, and I'm not leaving it. That's what I have spent 40 years doing. So, I thought I was entitled to my opinion. And I said, "I've been around so long that when the mall was getting permitted, I remember that turmoil very well." There was a huge turmoil in this town about rezoning the land so that the mall could be built. It got approved at a town meeting, and then it went to a townwide vote. And there are people who live here, who still live here, that were opposed to it. And I saw many vehement confrontations between people who were for and against. So, I said at the meeting, "I'm not interested in getting in the middle of that turmoil again. I don't want to say to the people who live in that neighborhood, 'Guess what? We wanted to change it to C-60, and you could have a four-story commercial building there.'" Because at the extreme, that's what it could be. I also said that I wished that we had finished the mixed-use overlay. Four years ago, a contract was signed with a company to develop the mixed-use overlay district and all the stuff that goes with it, as well as to work on improvements for Neither is finished. Partly because the planning board got wrapped up in a 40R bylaw, the MBTA zoning bylaw, the ADU bylaw. Those don't happen overnight. It does take a lot of work and a lot of time. So, I said then that I would really like to see the mixed-use overlay district get finished, because that would give somebody options. I also have been very blunt all along, because I did spend so many years on the Conservation Commission, that the land owned by the Conservation Commission behind Allen Avenue School would likely never be able to combined with it. And it isn't so much because of what the Conservation Commission says, it is because conservation land is Article 97 land, which is Article 97 of the Constitution of Massachusetts, which says that to take land out of conservation, it has to be approved by the Conservation Commission, it would have to be approved by you, then it has to go to the state legislature for a two-thirds vote, and it has to be approved by the secretary. And it also spells out pretty clearly that it cannot be used to gain money. It cannot be used for financial gain. So, because of all that context that I have, that generated my opinion. I knew that the planning board would eventually have a discussion about it and would vote, and I am only one vote. But I had been told that those two actions were not in line with the vision of the town. I don't think so. I wouldn't be on the Regional Economic Strategy Planning Group for Serpent. I wouldn't be doing the Environmental Committee. I wouldn't have gotten elected chairman of Serpent if I didn't care about the economic growth of this town. And oh, by the way, I also think I said at some point during that meeting that I kind of wished that they had stuck with Allen Avenue for the senior center and the food pantry, and sold Fisher College to somebody who would pay taxes to the town. That's my feeling. So, here we are. I know that Mr. Borg has nominated someone else to be appointed to the planning board tonight, and that's absolutely his prerogative. And it's your prerogative as to what to do. But my final words to you are a paraphrase of Dylan Thomas. I will not go quietly into the night. I will rage against the dying light. And no, I'm not dying, because that's what Dylan Thomas's words were about. But I am very sad to see no response from any of you, and not even the courtesy of anyone to say to me, "What's happening?" To me, that is the dying of the light of the town that I love. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, I will try my best to stand up by myself and leave.
Thank you, Mrs. Clarnor. We appreciate, I mean, obviously, we appreciate your service over many years to the town, and some people gave me looks that we had gone over the five-minute limit, but I said if you've given 90 years to the town, you can have as much time as you want during a resident community comment, so, you know.
And I find that upsetting, that people would say that, "Oh, she's gone over 10 minutes."
Either way, I just wanted to let you know, we pushed that, because you've earned it at the very least. And we want to say thank you for your service, and I'm sure that we'll have you back.
Please don't say that to me.
We'll have you back.
Please don't say that to me. It was offensive.
Have a good evening. All right. Mr. Kilke, I'm assuming you may wish to address the council this evening as well?
DeKalbica? Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right, 7:47.
It should unquestionably be assumed that North's town leader and town council, as public servants, respond to all inquiries, questions, and comments posed by any resident known as the public. However, based on this resident's personal experience, such is not the case, whereby on several occasions, responses to my interrogatories have gone ignored. Therefore, this taxpayer's advocate, for the benefit of all residents, requests that language in the form of a written policy be included preferentially in North's town charter, currently under its initial five-year review, or at a minimum, as a standalone policy obligating North's town leaders to respond to any and all inquiries, questions, and comments posed by North residents, the same public each of you were elected and appointed to serve. Relative to this aforementioned request, this taxpaying member of the public seeks a full explanation be provided to all residents regarding a significantly sizable pension benefit overpayment made to a town of North Attleboro retiree involving pension benefit payments erroneously made by both the Plymouth County Retirement Board and the North Attleboro Retirement Board, whereby Plymouth County Retirement Board officially seeks reimbursement of such pension benefit overpayment. The purpose for this inquiry is that this resident, for the benefit of all residents, seeks confirmation and verification that all residents will be informed precisely how this significant pension overpayment will be reimbursed to the Plymouth County Retirement In summation, my questions are: Will the overpaid pension funds be returned by the retiree who received such overpayment? Or will taxpayers' money be used to satisfy such requested reimbursement? Secondly, can North's residents be assured that an official written policy will be drafted, preferably for inclusion in the town charter, to ensure that all inquiries, questions, and comments posed by any member of the public receives a valid response? Lastly, when will North's residents receive a comprehensive explanation regarding the above referenced pension overpayment? Should I wait for a response tonight, or is none forthcoming? Mr. Pari?
It's a question for me. I don't have any idea of what you're talking about on the first point. On the charter change, I believe there is a citizen petition mechanism that a citizen is welcome to go through, so if you'd like some information, I'm sure that our town council clerk could share that with you, in terms of how to go ahead and file a citizen petition. So, if that's something that you're interested in, you're welcome to.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding your, say again?
If you wish for the council to adopt, or the town to adopt or make a charter change, you're welcome to file a citizen petition. That's your right, and so the information is readily available on how to do that.
So, you're saying it's going to require that? The council can't see the merits of doing this on their own, is that what you're telling me?
I'm not speaking for the council this evening, I was trying to help you. If you wish to file a citizen petition.
I realize a petition can be filed. It sounds to me like a little bit of foot tagging is what it sounds like. Is this not something that the council members can decide on their own as being something worth doing?
I'd move it to committee.
We can decide, we can decide anything we want. Generally, we're not going to make a decision on a charter change at a meeting on a drop of a hat like this. I was giving you one avenue. Another avenue is a councillor could bring this up as an idea and try to get it on the agenda, if there was an appetite for it, from councillors. There isn't an appetite for me for it personally, but if one of these other nine, eight members wanted to pursue it, they're more than welcome to.
I'll tell you why, Mr. Pari, why do we do this? I'll tell you why, Mr. Parry. Why don't we do this? Why don't you have this discussion with the council members, see if there's an appetite for it, and if I find out there is no appetite for it, then I'll file a petition.
Fine. If any counselor wishes for this to be on the agenda, reach out to me via email. If it's not on the next agenda, if it's not on the next agenda, you can, I would say, go ahead with the petition. I think I've given you a pretty thorough response.
To me, I find if I'm forced to file a petition, that indicates to me that there's not a lot of appetite on part of the council members to do this on their own, which doesn't make much sense to me.
I think that's a fair assumption.
Could I say something?
Yes, and then we'd like to move on.
I'm sorry?
Yes, you may ask a question or answer a question, whatever it might be.
So somebody will let me know whether or not the council wishes to do this on their own?
I just asked if I could make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Littlepoint, please. The floor is yours.
So I think your point's appreciated, okay? I think a blanket rule that obligates every question to be answered every time is...
Shouldn't that be expected of public service?
Look, you and I have had lots of back and forths over years, and I trust that you're satisfied with my level of responsiveness. But if the same person, it might not be you, asks the same question over and over and over again, or the same line of questioning, there are times, and I have experienced those myself, although not with you, where eventually the response has to be, "I agree to disagree, and I'm moving on." So that's my concern with a blanket charter requirement that says that every solicitation...
You know what, Mr. Littlepoint, that's better than no response at all. When I'm asked to submit an email of my questions in order to obtain a response, and then my email falls into an abyss. Two months later, I'm still waiting for answers. Individuals will ask me to send him my questions.
Sometimes residents will ask questions of us, and the questions are worded in such a way as they're misleading questions or they're based on faulty assumptions. So if a resident asks me a question, we'll just say, if a random resident X asks me a question, they say, "Why, Mr. Parry, do you believe that the town should waste its taxpayer dollars on a certain thing?" The assumption that you're making is that it's a waste of taxpayer dollars isn't accurate, in my opinion.
Convinced the public.
So therefore, therefore, we shouldn't, I wouldn't answer. Personally, I don't answer questions that are asked to me that way. If I'm asked an objective question, I will give an objective answer. But if I'm asked a question that's loaded, right, with falsification...
I don't want to slow tonight's meeting down.
It's already slowed down, so, I mean...
So why don't we do this? Why don't you talk to the other council members, see if there's an appetite to adopt this request on your own? And if not, somebody get back to me and let me know that there is no appetite to do this, and I will then submit a petition.
Thank you, Mrs. Kilke.
But I'll wait for an answer from somebody.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public that wish to address the council this evening? No? All right, let's move on. Okay, where am I? We've got council agenda. Confirmations. Measure 26003, confirmation of appointment of Stephanie Mitchell as Animal Control Officer for the town of North Attleboro. Mr. Borg.
And for some good news, Council President. Stephanie, come on out. Please sit. It's been a day. I have the unique pleasure and distinct honor to be able to bring forth you tonight a nomination for the Animal Control Officer here in town. As you know, this is an important, public-facing department in the town, and it has a lot of responsibilities. And our animal shelter, right, in the past might have been confused for an animal rescue because it had so many animals. Thanks to our previous animal control, we actually formulated a coherent policy and strategy of how to take care of the animals here in town in the best way. But that gentleman has moved on. While he is here in the room tonight, right, he's still a part of the town, but it created an opportunity for us to bring Stephanie Mitchell before you tonight. I want to tell you that I sat down with Stephanie, and we've had a number of conversations, and I'm absolutely impressed with her abilities, what she's done in the past. This is somebody that cares about what happens with animals in our town. This is a person that knows how to lead an organization. This is a person that has a laundry list of skills that are applicable to this particular field. Stephanie is the right person at the right time for this town. So this evening, you've had the Rita Head packet, you've had her resume. I would like to get your support and confirmation of Stephanie Mitchell to be the next Animal Control Officer for the town of North Attleboro.
Thanks, Mr. Borg. Ms. Mitchell, would you cater to just the council?
Sure. Last year, when I applied for a position at the shelter animal control, I will be completely honest and say that I thought it was going to be a temporary appointment, kind of a stopover. However, it became very clear to me after working with Mr. Dubois and the rest of the team there, as well as my last two months in the acting role, that this is a job I completely love, and I feel like I've been training for for most of my career. The community rallies around the shelter. We have so many great residents and that come in either looking for help, looking to help, donate. We are a last resort for people who need, you know, to make terrible decisions and moving on without their animals, or they are looking for resources to see if we can help them out. On the wildlife side, we have animals coming in like the coyotes and the bobcats and things like that. There's definitely a need for wildlife education in the town that I'm very excited to help try to move forward. It's just been, it's honestly been a dream role, and there's just a lot of opportunity to be had. My family and I are very deeply rooted in the community. I was born in Razor Island, but my husband and I have been living in the Attleboro area for the last almost 20 years. He's an employee in the city of Attleboro, so we are committed to the town and the community. It's hard work. It's really rewarding work, and I'm looking forward to continuing it if you'll have me.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. I appreciate that. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Simmons?
Just real quickly, when I was looking over your resume, very impressed with the amount of work in this field, specifically with Capefront Park Zoo. Having been familiar with the Friends of the Capefront Park Zoo, your work there was excellent, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what you do here in town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Any other questions or comments?
Just a quick comment. When I was reading through your packet, the only objection I had was, I was thinking to myself, "Why'd she come here? She's like doing all these other things." So you sort of tackled that right off the bat.
Yeah, yeah. There was another opportunity I was kind of looking at, and this was sort of a fill-in for a bit, but this turned into, I just was a lot more invigorated with this compared to what I'd been doing in the past, so...
I love that you've thought of it that way, and that you've actually thought about it that way. So, thank you.
Cool.
No problem.
I move to confirm the appointment of Stephanie Mitchell as Animal Control Officer for the town of North Attleboro.
Second. I got a motion for Mr. Point. Second, Mr. Donovan. Is there any discussion? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes nine to zero.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well, you're kind of already welcome aboard. Officially, welcome aboard.
And paid.
All right. Next up, Measure 26004, confirmation of the appointment of Jessica Zandan as a member of the Board of Library Trustees. Mr. Borg?
Council President, members of the council, another great opportunity. Again, the number of volunteers and the quality of folks that come from the town to sacrifice and serve their own personal time at, you know, currently no pay is always impressive. Jessica reached out to me, said she was interested in the library trustees. We sat down and had a discussion about, you know, her involvement, what she did, what the vision was, what we're trying to do with the library. And then I said, "Look, I need you to go meet with Deb Clifton, our librarian, our director of the library, and go to the meetings, see what you think. Let me know." And she does have a background with the Sun Chronicle, right?
I do.
So it's always good to keep the media close, like in the back row. So, but absolutely impressed. Even, you know, Debbie Clifton, if you want to say something, you're more than welcome to, but we'd be honored and appreciative of your support in confirming Jessica as a member of the Board of Library Trustees.
Thanks, Mr. Borg. Jessica, would you cater to just the council at all?
Hi, good evening, everyone. So I heard someone say that, you know, libraries, what are they good for anyway? The hoop uses them anymore? You know, it's just books on a shelf, which kind of was a dagger to my heart because libraries are near dear to my heart. They always have been. So fast forward, months later, I see a posting on Facebook looking for somebody for the Board of Trustees for the library, and I thought, what a great way to get involved. I've lived here in town for 11 years. I've lived in Attleboro previously. And so I thought, what a great way to make a contribution, to get involved. So that's why I'm here today.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments?
Sorry, my wife's not feeling well.
Oh, excuse myself.
Okay, so any questions or comments? Here are none. I'll take a motion, please.
I move to confirm the appointment of Jessica Zandan as a member of the Board of Library Trustees.
Second.
I got a motion from Mr. Littlepoint. Second, Mr. Bogdan. Is there any discussion?
Did I pronounce your name right?
You did, yes.
Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes nine to zero. Welcome aboard. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Measure 2612, the confirmation of the appointment of Connor Tarr as a member of the Planning Board. Mr. Borg?
Council President, members of the council, this evening we have Connor Tarr. You may know Connor from previous service on other committees. He has been on the Charter Review Committee, as well as the Associate Member of the Planning Board. So you've already confirmed him in a relationship to the Planning Board. This night, we are asking for your support for Connor to be a Planning Board member to fill a vacancy there. Connor and I had an interview. We've sat down a number of times. We've even bumped into each other in the parking lot on occasion to talk about issues here in town. We've talked about role of the Planning Board, what the vision is, where we're trying to go, some of the things we want to accomplish. Connor comes back and firmly supports all the things that we want to do here in town, and I'd ask for your support this evening. Again, he's already an Associate Member, where he comes in and sits on for certain items that would be brought before you, but now we'd ask him to be elevated to full member of the Planning Board.
All right, thank you, Mr. Borg. Mr. Tarr, would you care to address the council this evening?
I'd love to. Just to give some background, if any of you weren't here the last couple times that I've been before the board. I did my, I have my engineering degree from the University of Maine. I originally grew up in Maryland. I then met my wife in law school in Pennsylvania, and she's from here, so that's why we came back here. We've been here for the last five years now, or almost five years now. Loved it, plan to stay in town. Daughter's going to Martin School. She was at Community over the summer, so that's why I got to see Mr. Borg in the parking lot quite a bit.
Well, there you go.
So we're excited to be part of the town, and I'm excited to still be part of the town and look forward to its development. I actually live right next to Kelly Boulevard, or not Kelly Boulevard, sorry. Excuse me. I live next to the new development that's going in, so I will get to see it as it goes up every day. It's actually kind of fun. So I'm really curious to see how it's going to turn out. I did get to sit on some of the board meetings for that. However, due to some snafu or some miscommunication between council, I wasn't required for the vote for that for certain reasons. So I'm not exactly sure why, but there was some communication. But I did get to sit through some of them. So I have been to a number of the Planning Board meetings. I do plan to attend to all the rest of them now, moving forward.
Very good, very good. It wasn't from council, right? There was no BBR involved?
No, no, no.
Planning Board.
Yeah, okay. It was discussions with Gil. It was after discussions with Gil, as far as necessary, or...
Okay. So anyway, thank you for that. Are there any questions, Mr. Tarr, or comments?
One question, thank you. Thank you for all you've done so far, but you were on Charter Review Committee, right?
I was on the Charter Review Committee for a period of time. It just didn't end up meshing well with...
Well, that's my question, because I believe I was one of, I was, you I replaced, and my understanding that you left because Thursdays were difficult for you because you work in Boston, and planning meets at 6:30 on Thursdays. Is that a concern?
Well, originally, planning was supposed to be meeting once a month, and then it ended up being a weekly meeting as a ramp up to the five-year review.
Oh, the charter, right.
For the Charter Review Committee. I actually attended, I actually had a conflict with one of the Planning Board meetings that I had to attend in addition with the Charter Review Committee. I also, it just didn't end up fitting well with, at the time, with my family. I was actually new in my position in Boston, and now I'm actually in a position where I can switch my day in Boston, so that is no longer going to be a conflict.
I think you'd be...
And it doesn't, and it doesn't work with my wife. It didn't work with my wife at the time either. So I'm in a much better position now. Now, that also helps that my daughter's three instead of one, so significant improvement.
All right, thank you.
It all adds up. Gets better. Any other questions, comments?
Connor, nice to meet you.
Yes.
We've met before. Just a question for you, and it's sort of just building off some of the, kind of the traffic getting to here, but when you sort of think about your role, how will you, like, I think it's important that you're aligned to the vision of the town and the strategy and all of that, but I also think it's important that you're representing the community and the people and yourself and your own perspectives. Maybe just talk about how you'll navigate that?
Well, as my predecessor once said, I bring all of my experience to the Planning Board. So my experience is as a certified civil engineer, as a lawyer. I work for the Department of Public Utilities now. I work in the Energy Facilities Siting Division, although if there's any sighting here, I would not actually be able to participate in that through my job. But that background and that information, as well as working with developers and all of that information, has been able to give me a good perspective. I've also recently participated in rewriting our regulations for the Department of Public Utilities as there was a new law that was passed, the Climate Act that was passed in 2024. It's kind of been fast-tracked at the moment. So I've helped develop those regulations and working with a lot of local zoning, which is a specific part of my position now. So in dealing with other planning boards, that background information and that wealth of knowledge, I think, is going to be able to add to my position as far as taking into account all of the different aspects presented at different meetings, different projects that are presented to the town, depending on what they are, as well as alternatives that may need to be put forward or suggested, but not hindered in any way, if that makes sense.
I think that's a good question, too, because, again, nothing to do with your candidacy. It's just, I think, anybody who's being appointed to a board, or even us, running for council, the town is, there is no, no one is the town. The town is all of us, right? There's no one person. There's no one voice of the town, and we all have our own perspectives, and I think that's important. But we also, you know, we want to be, the town does kind of have a philosophical position, professional approach. There can be, like, directionally, kind of the way the town's going, but there is no one way to serve the town and be in line with the town. So I think that's important to call out. Like, we're putting you on here for, he's putting you on here for a reason, like professional skills, background, education, like that's why you're there. You're there to exercise those skills, and I think that's what we all expect of any appointee. I know, like, that might go without saying, but again, I think, based on the tenor earlier...
Well, there's the question behind, the question behind my question is just, like, I don't think that we're looking for yes people, per se, right? Like, I want to make sure that you're going to bring those experiences to the table, and you're going to represent the community in the best way that you can possibly represent the community.
Absolutely. And I am, that's because I am...
All right, guys, we are back. We are back. And this is the last part of our meeting before executive session where we're going to do our goals. So I'm going to give you guys like a quick five-minute preamble here, set the tone in the background, what we're trying to do and why. And then we're just going to open it up, right, to the council for the conversation. So here it is. So we're creating a roadmap for where we want to go, priorities, and how we'll get there, goals. Robert's rules, let's not worry about them right now, per se. We're still -- but we're still time-bound to keep us on track and get home at the end of the night. And so that's why I asked us to restrict this to about five goals each tonight, so we can kind of keep it moving. I know you guys might have more than five goals, you probably do. That's okay. We'll bring those up, let's like focus on the five top ones first, so that'll keep the conversation, you know, efficient and effective. At the end of the night, we're going to have a list of individual counselor goals and a draft framework for our strategic priorities that we all hopefully agree to conceptually. We're going to assign people to rework the priorities between the meetings and then publish those to the town website. So that would be kind of the next step coming out of this. So why we're here? This is something that I instituted in my first term as president with my fellow counselors because we wanted to make sure that all counselors had a chance to get their ideas heard and discussed early in the planning cycle and in conjunction with the town managers and the town departments' planning cycle. We have short terms as counselors, just two years, and with elections, that seems like it's shorter than two years usually, right? So we don't have a lot of time to get our stuff done. This is the most important year of your term probably, right, to get a lot of the stuff done, because we don't have to worry about anything else at this point. This helps us take advantage of the time that we have in an efficient manner, and I hope it gives everyone a chance to get their ideas heard. That's the most important part. A reminder for the counselors, we're on TV. This is informal, but our words matter and people are paying attention. But also, at the same time, there's no bad ideas, and even if you think it's a bad idea, we're not necessarily debating, we're just sharing, and we're getting to a consensus on the projects or types of projects and priorities of the council. Just because we have an idea tonight doesn't mean it's going to get done or that there's consensus, right? It's just, that's the way it is. But this is a free platform, so we can get those ideas out. Reminder for the public and counselors, like I just said, that just because a counselor has an idea, it doesn't mean they have support of the full council. It's an opportunity and platform to share those ideas, gauge support, and where feasible, get them on the roadmap for completion. And we know Town Manager Board does a great job of engaging, listening in on this conversation and incorporating a lot of our ideas into an actual timeline and a plan, and that is very much appreciated, I think really helps us to work together with the town manager over the course of the year. It's a good system, and we appreciate his engagement and support of this process, for sure. So what we're going to do is, I want to make sure that I give a definition of what I mean when I say strategic priorities and goals, because we're going to do both tonight, all right? And so a strategic priority is like the big bucket, three to five max, like priorities that will guide decisions for the next couple of years here while we're in council. And let's be honest, so think about it, like, the last time we set these priorities, they stayed in place for four years. So most likely will be long-lasting in terms of what we're setting here, but not necessarily. A goal is a tangible, measurable action that for the next 12 months that will ladder up to those priorities, right? So we have the priorities, and we have the goals, and then we're going to align those goals to the priorities. But I'm going to do it differently this time. I want us to actually do the goals first. I felt that, I talked to some other councils about this, I felt that in the past, we've spent a lot of time doing the priorities and wordsmithing them and discussing and debating them, and then when we put our goals up there, there's like one or zero on a couple of those priorities, which led me to believe maybe they're not priorities for us sometimes, right? And so, maybe they are, maybe they are. But like, I figured it would make more sense this time to let's start with our goals. And then Annie is kind enough to volunteer to help facilitate this discussion for us. And so we're going to put our goals up there, and we're going to ask everyone to take a sticky note, right, up to five, you know, that you think are your top goals, just plop them up there on the whiteboard, and then we'll have, Annie will facilitate a conversation where folks will have a chance to talk about their -- you don't have to, don't feel, don't feel pressured to, you know, speak, or if you want to, you can. We'll talk about what our goals are, and then we'll try to figure out if we can together, you know, figure out what we think our priorities are based on the goals that we're putting up there. You know what I mean? So like, if six of us say they want to, you know, fund the police department better, I think we would decide, you know, funding public safety is a top priority for the council, that would be something that we'd figure out. Not saying that's what it is, but that's just an example. Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right. So, I said that, from there, we're going to wrap the meeting up, right? Like I said, we don't have to finish the strategic priorities tonight, I'd like us to just get to like a consensus in terms of beliefs directionally and what they are, and then we'll ask a couple of counselors to workshop them, kind of come back with a final version for us to approve next meeting. And so without further ado, if you guys don't have any questions, we can kick into --
Posting.
Start this meeting. This session.
Yeah, start posting.
Are you doing that one?
Start posting.
Yep, you're already done, you messaged us.
The charter change.
Yeah, once you're ready, you can go ahead and do it.
Well, not specifically.
Now, right now, just put them up wherever.
You can put them anywhere you want.
Over there, one over here.
I'm making mine spaced out, so you could put them in between mine.
There are some signs.
Sticky's on the board, what it means.
Oh.
I know, I have one in my house.
Getting a rug in here is my loss.
So dangerous in these early jizz.
Yeah.
They are pretty rolly.
They're too rolly.
I just don't know what category mine goes. There's no category.
There's no category.
Well, see, some people roll category.
These don't stick very well to the thing.
It's because of the wrong color.
Oh, my God, Kevin, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
Isn't that sticky?
They're like --
Want me to get some tape?
No, well.
No.
It'll be all right.
You'll live.
Because we'll collect them all up again.
I left one out because I had six.
Overachiever.
Yeah, I had ten, but I scrapped four.
I mean, I was going to say, the Joanne Cathcart rule, high street, you're, maybe you're allowed to put in one or two extra if you really want.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think a lot of them got me reading.
What is that one?
If it falls off the board, you can't do it.
What does it say?
This one says ish, but I think it's supposed to say high street.
High street, it's a long street.
That's my number one, too.
That looks like high street.
Actually, it looks like his street.
His street, yes.
Oh, I heard that street.
It's a good thing I'm here to read my handwriting.
I can do it as a doctor.
It's just bad. It's so bad.
You're going to salt it.
Give us that.
Karen has the best handwriting anyway.
Better than mine, that's what she said. Mine. You thought this was going to be easier.
Counsel?
Licensing void to council.
Okay. Well, luckily, this isn't, you have to guess who said it.
If you can't read it, it's mine.
Yeah. It's no rush, I'm just staring at you.
Missing something. One of you guys probably has it. And no, I am.
All right, everyone has ones up there? Are we ready?
Yeah, pretty good.
Hey. All right. So I'm just going to start reading them, I guess. We'll go from there, and then we can kind of, as we read them, like-mindedly put them together, and then we'll try to formulate like some buckets, as Justin said. So this says licensing board to council. Would anyone like to speak on that?
Just fold the licensing board duties into the council's duties, which would require a charter change.
Okay, all right. I feel like I'm going to go to one that I just saw, that. Charter on write-in.
Charter change on write-in ballots.
Okay.
Mandating that you have the same number that it takes to get on the ballot in the first place.
What's the current, what's the current limit? It's like 25, right? 25.
25.
And you can get elected as a write-in, right?
No, that's the problem.
You can be voted one.
Oh, geez. Yeah, okay, I thought it was lower, I thought it was.
Establish an appeals process for --
Licensing board.
Licensing.
It kind of goes with --
Okay. It looks like devils for licensing.
Okay, you're right, I know what happened.
No, no, I got it. So, okay, fire and police fully staffed per national standards? This is just so much fun. Yeah, I think Scott saved my doctor. Do we have a little tape? Because I'll just, sorry, fire and police fully staffed per national standards? Okay, no one wants to say anything? All right. I'm going to put that right, oh, that's right, because you wrote it. All right, all right. So I'm going to put it, yeah, we'll put it over here for safety with an S. All right, and then we're going to go municipal employee benefits, our town needs to opt in to the state PFML program, paid family leave, thank you.
That's me.
Okay. Municipal employee benefits.
Maybe something under, I don't know, boys?
We don't have to categorize it yet.
Just yet, okay, all right, I'm going to put it over here.
That could kind of go with the staffing, though. It could, it could governance. The police staffing, that sort of fits together.
All right. Charter changes, create ad hoc committee and follow-up recommendations, one stipends, two board membership, BOH.
Waterhouse wants to increase by two, sorry.
Yeah, I was like, what's the tree?
But those are the six, there were six recommendations from the charter review committee. So some of those, like licensing, that's, so that could be maybe court.
Yeah.
If we followed up on those six, then those others would be part of it.
I'm just going to read the minor charter edits, budget cycle, move joint meeting, license appeal process, which was here, too, and write-in candidates.
So is the recommendation to, like, drive the charter commission recommendations to --
Well, I mean, since it's like every five years, we should have a mechanism, there was, you know, a year spent coming up with those, and a lot of work went into it, so now there should be an ad hoc committee that looks, it's rejected, maybe it's decided it's not doable, but somebody's going to look at it. Yeah.
This is for, if you don't mind, sir, thank you so much. High Street.
Finish the High Street fields.
Okay. I'm just going to stick this right here for a second.
Annie?
Yeah?
I have one right by your hand there, that one?
Yeah.
That might go at the top of all those other charter change ones.
Okay, refer, was that charter 290?
Oh, sorry, not that one. There's another one, right under your hand, right? Sorry. This one right here.
Refer drafting of a home rule petition.
For charter changes.
Thank you. For charter revisions to bylaw.
So similar to what Laura's suggesting, but I don't think we need an ad hoc committee. I think we just refer to bylaw.
Emerald Square Mall, I know, that was just me, so I'm just going to stick that with --
Economic development.
What about it?
What about Emerald Square? What about, we're not posting.
They have posted.
It's okay, take your time, we'll take your time.
Emerald Square Mall. Face reality and plan forward. Develop a realistic action plan for the mall's future, engaging stakeholders in redevelopment and reuse opportunities. That's Emerald Square Mall. Oh, we already have tape. So just leave them on the floor, we're just going to, it just means that they're, so I'm going to put this here. Improve community communication and transparency, that's also me. I'm just going to read what I wrote. Yep, I do have six up here. Make town information consistent and accessible, ensuring agendas, meetings, and resources are centralized. I understand that that is something that's happening now, but I still think we could do better. I still feel like we should be doing things like everything, if we're doing some stuff online to be able to be done, everything should be online. If boards are updated, they should be updated in a timely manner, things like that. So just communication, which I'm just going to stick here. All right, and then stipends.
That could be lumped with the charter.
What's the --
That's the John.
Just continuing the discussion that we've had. We had a plan, and, but it was designed for next year's budget, which we'll be starting before we know it. So let's just keep that in the forefront, make sure that the plan goes into action for next year's budget.
Well, that's not necessarily a charter change.
That's correct.
There is a charter change component potentially of stipends, but this particular proposal may not be that.
I am just limiting mine to non.
So that's not a, that's not a charter thing.
That's just us doing something. That's just budgetary, good governance.
I'm going to put that here for now. All right, I put, there was another finished High Street field here, I put that there. Ask town manager to make it official policy that ADA standards are the minimum. I don't know why I'm looking at you, Mike, sorry.
That's come up several times at the Commission on Disability where they want, they want all buildings, programs, that's something, to exceed ADA standards. So ADA compliance is not going to, is what they're saying. And so I would like to see that become the official policy of the town, probably supported by the council.
Isn't that the law?
The law is ADA compliance. They want, they're saying that that's not enough. So for example, the ramp at the high school, that you, that somebody can't wheel a wheelchair up without assistance, that's ADA compliance. They're saying exceed it.
I understand.
So would that, is that something that would go in as a town council or governments? Where do you want to put that?
Good governance. I'd say good governance, probably, yeah.
We don't have any categories yet, guys, so.
We're just preparing to put some order here, Justin. We can rework as we go. All right. Establish a business development opportunity position. Create a dedicated liaison or director role to attract new business, support expansions, guide permitting, and market North Attleboro as open for business.
Questionnaire, well, it says empty, right? No, it's, I brought the position back as the Director of Community Development and sent it to the council. I got no feedback. Now we'll bring it back up.
There might be another one up there about that.
I know, I want to do mine first.
The one that didn't put up, this kind of touches on that.
Governments, that's what I thought, too. I was going to stick it up.
Or you can have development.
And then, then there's this one, Office of Community Development, yep, that's the same one. Establish a fair and comprehensive system of employee feedback. I love that one.
That was me.
I'm just going to stick it up.
Maybe with the paid family medical, like --
Personnel.
I missed that one right here, right? Get you guys staying on, good job. All right. Create and implement an action plan for ESM.
Emerald Square Mall.
I think that says redevelopment.
Redevelopment.
Yep. Okay.
Basically the same thing.
It was on the mall earlier.
So I'm going to put the malls together. Luckily, we don't have another one. Okay. New senior center fully operational.
That was me. Just as it says, making sure that we're delivering, I hope, I would hope, like, 100% or vast majority of all services that we're currently delivering in the current senior center, in the new senior centers, and if there's anything that we can do as a council to help that, speed that along, that's about.
Economic growth assessment.
That's also me.
Outside third-party consultant.
Yeah, so one of the things that I would like to get would be a third-party view of our economic growth potential, an assessment, right? Like, housing would be included in that, but it wouldn't be exclusively housing, it would be like, what industry should we be looking to attract? Just some sort of a third-party view to help us get our hands wrapped around what we can do as a community to better drive economic growth. And I think that would support, if we were going to go ahead and hire, we had this conversation before, Mr. Borg, if we were going to go ahead and hire that community development, basically -- before, Mr. Borg, if we were gonna go ahead and hire that community development, basically the economic development coordinator. Like, this sort of information would be, I think, foundational to that.
They do.
Yeah. So, that's just something that, to me, is, I've been wanting to do this for probably three or four years, and I think it's like the...
So, where do you guys, where do you think, I'm just gonna stick it here. Do you think it groups with anything else that we have thus far?
Anything economic growth-related.
Yeah.
Emerald Square Mall is probably close to it. Right now, it's not necessarily the same, but...
Yep. Fix of conversation. All right, and then I have, oh, did I do this one? No, I didn't. Refer, yeah, Charter 290 zoning to bylaw for a comprehensive review to ease restrictions to support business growth and increase housing development?
Yes.
I said house, right?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Pretty much, that's it, yeah. I think our zoning...
Right here? No, actually.
Yeah.
Yep.
Particularly our housing zoning is archaic and limits the type of housing that we can have in the town. So, I think ideally it would have been the planning board that would have initiated this, but I think it doesn't have to come from planning. We can drive it, too. So, let's send it to bylaw and have us, I guess I'm trying to get bylaw to buy your work, but give us a chance to take a look at it and see what we can do and start the ball rolling.
I'm seeing kinda like economic growth slash bylaw legislative that are aligned to economic growth. Maybe the Emerald Square is not the same necessarily. So, maybe there's two categories there, I'm not sure, but there's something in that area.
We'll get there.
We'll get there.
Yes.
All right. Build a fire station. That's me. I didn't really say anything other than that, so just build a fire station. Where was it?
Yeah, safety section, is that there, maybe?
I don't know.
Do we have any, like, an infrastructure? That'd be infrastructure.
Infrastructure and safety.
I'm just gonna stick it right here for other, I think I saw some others.
There's one more up there about fire station.
Okay, sorry, guys.
Actually, that was High Street Fields, because that would all be infrastructure stuff.
I forgot I have it right on my hand. Every time. No, it's good. I just swore. Stronger processes and communication with business and community. Create clear and more collaborative practices with new and current businesses when working with boards, improving transparency and efficiency. So, it's again more, yeah. So, where do they have that? Is this this one, economic development? Right, yeah. And then I have downtown revitalization and marketing. It's kinda the same path, but I'll just read it. Continue work to strengthen downtown vibrancy, attract investment, and market North Attabro as a thriving and welcoming community. That's through, like, advertising, marketing ourselves, things like that. That's also econ. Council confirmation process improvement and effective.
That was me, effectiveness. That was just, again, nothing to do with my speeding, just in general, just a review of our confirmation process and, you know, how, if we can do things differently as a council.
All right.
Good governance.
Yeah, it is good governance. We've kinda been talking about this, but again, I wanna see that conversation.
That's what I said, you're immediately just like...
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Sounds like it.
Good governance, so that was econ.
To me, though, I would like to say that the package that the town manager has been providing us is very helpful. It's the kind of thing we've been looking for. So, well done, like, very much appreciated.
And then this was...
Destruction.
Yep.
There should be expectations of what to do with that packet.
Would this go kinda together?
How is it evaluated? Is it clear with expectations?
I think it's on us, yeah. That one is about us. It's really what it is.
I think you need a better article.
Both of the, all these, right? Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
And then that's the by, charter, yeah. All right. Improve cross-board understanding of town vision.
Oh, that was me. I think we should improve that cross-board understanding of vision.
You know what, Keith? Really? All right. Where would you like it to go, Keith?
Government.
Good governance.
All right, Keith, because I know your handwriting now. Create a single, on North Attabro, a single, I don't know what that word is, case? Single place?
That's not my handwriting.
Oh.
No, that's me.
A single?
A single page on annelber.com. For all meeting information, so it would have announcements, agendas, minutes, and videos. And if anyone's curious what I'm thinking about, if you go to the City of Worcester's page, they implemented a product called One Meeting. And on the page, it shows upcoming meetings, and then it shows archived meetings. And for each board, it has the meeting date and then all the available material, and it's all on page. So, it's really nice. It's a nice way to see it, so you're not hunting around, which board is that again? What's the name of that board? It's all right there.
Andy, I think that's a...
And I'm sure there's probably an expense incurred with that.
Just, you kinda have...
Please, right here.
It's very similar, but take a look at Worcester's page and see what they have.
If you go to the calendar, if you click on the calendar, it gives you all the meetings, the agenda, and links to everything that...
But not history.
But not the archive.
Right.
All right.
Or the link to the videos. That's the other big piece.
The link to the videos and the agenda.
Okay. All right. Economic development, this was already labeled. Create comprehensive plan that incorporates available, developable land projects that maximize tax revenue and limit public services costs, safety impact, police, fire, zoning review.
That was mine, yeah. That's the theme coming up, that comprehensive, that pulls in safety, like, how much do we build before we really have to consider another fire station? How many more people can we add before we really, also include more officers? And what land, I mean, some of these meetings, like, yeah, some of them, it looks like we have all this spot, but it's caught, this one's caught up with a legal problem. This one is all ledge and no one's ever gonna build there. This one has no infrastructure, there's not gonna be any commercial business if there's no SOA. Like, so what do we really have that's developable? Developables? Developable?
Developable.
Yeah, that's the word.
Education. Develop a timeline with measurable goals to bring teachers and support staff salaries into competitive range with surrounding towns.
That's mine. Would love to see us concrete, get there. We've lost a lot of good people this summer.
Personnel?
Took a bunch of people.
Or finances.
We've gotta get our teacher salaries up.
That's not a finance one.
It has to be something else like that. It's probably a little bit blah blah, but yeah.
I'll just put that here for now. And then improve intra-council collaboration.
That was me.
Okay.
So, I didn't know if I wanted to write this or not, but one of the reasons I ran was because I thought the council could do a better job having a spirit at core and kinda looking.
You're gonna host parties for us?
No, I don't... I have very literally tough book club. It's not people liking each other, it's just like, I don't know.
You're supposed to laugh at that, Keith. It's part of the intra.
I know, I know. I'm sorry, now I can't go back and laugh. That would be awkward. Yeah, you guys get what I mean, though.
Yeah. So, run the lines of a code of conduct type of thing? Or not as, not as official, like the opposite?
No, no. Just norms.
Like what? Can, I don't understand, so what do you mean?
Like, just, I don't know, like...
You don't have to be in the spot. You can come back to it, too, it's okay.
Like, I know what I'm talking about, and I think you guys all do, too, but just the ability for everyone to feel like they're heard without it having to be confrontational.
Okay, all right, I see what you mean.
So, where do you want this to go?
Good governance.
Governance.
Governance, yeah.
Okay. Try to have greater synchrony between town and school budget discussions.
Me.
And...
Governance. Governance, communications.
Kind of in line with change in the meeting, the joint meeting and...
Yep. Did I not put this, I already read this one. This is mine. This was downtown revitalization.
It's up there. It's already up there. It's up there.
Expand the strategy for comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I support that, too. Good one.
That's up there.
This is me, this is the mall and code. It basically says, explain that plan for Route 1 south of 120, and have like sort of an integrated plan, and make it more public, because I know there's a lot of work that happens with it right now, and I think people are just like the mall, the mall, the mall. And there's lots of stuff happening, and there's lots of puts and takes, and people I don't think understand that, so whatever we can do to enhance the plan and make it more public.
Create a regular approach to committee/board feedback and ops for improvement.
Yeah, so this is mine, and it's just, and it's not from tonight, I swear it was on my line before, but just like, you know, as boards and committees are going along, if there's opportunities for feedback based on, you know, whether it's, you know, professionalism or whatever, that we're just giving that feedback along the way.
I like that.
Communications. I've got it.
I think that's mine. All right. Explore ways to encourage and improve public participation and engagement, for example, more town hall-style events at convenient times. Establish...
I'm sorry, was that yours? What's the...
Yeah. There's made progress on this front, I think.
I get it.
But I do hear from a lot of people, like, you know, I don't know what's going on, like, I can't make the meeting, because, I mean, to be fair, it's, I don't know if people are busy.
I'm not that many.
We're just finding ways that might get people to come up, even if we have a restaurant, dinner bar, or a coffee shop.
We used to do the compensation.
Right, that's what I meant, we've made some progress on that, but I think we should...
I got you.
Yeah.
I think it's good.
That's mine. Whatever you got in hand.
I wonder. Establish a sports complex, pickleball courts, soccer field, basketball courts, batting cages. Possible location is old, answer is fitness by shaws, proximity to highway, and compete with MPC.
Yes. So, I thought you had said, last year you spoke to somebody about the developer wanted to do a sports complex.
There is, but it's not in that location.
Right. Well, you squashed that earlier with the whole development thing, so I was thinking...
We're not the only, so...
I know, I know, I know. I would just pick that location because it's next to the highway and it would, for me, it would compete directly with Mansfield or Foxborough, whatever town that's in, it's right next to it, so. But yeah, it's an all-in-one kind of sports complex.
Come on. Ah, we can, yeah, we can move it.
Okay.
Possible location.
Hey, if this, where is it? If that, you know, that position is done, maybe they will find someone for that.
Yeah.
Open a skate BMX park, still in early development, open to possibilities.
So, skate, outdoor skate slash BMX park.
Like a park and rec thing or a business?
Probably like, that'd be like a park and rec thing.
So, infrastructure?
Yeah. Some towns would have them.
Yep. Expand the strategy for ongoing health insurance management and where possible, make more public.
Yeah, that's, that's me again. It's just like our number one cost issue, so let's just make sure we're double down on it.
That under personnel or is that? Establish a town-wide donation platform. Install Venmo signs around town facilities, work with Friends of North Park and Rec.
Yeah, so the idea is, I get a lot of requests for dog box donations where I can donate to it, almost weekly, not monthly, but, and we'll also capitalize on people from out of town, because a lot of people from out of town go there, over half of them, including that with the zoo, and then, you know, traveling ball team, something like that. So, I was thinking, since government can't ask for money, could we work with the Friends of North Park and Rec, because they're 501(c), they can accept money. So, if they're willing to set up a Venmo account that could follow it, that way people can do it right on their phone. Originally, I was thinking of QR signs, but then I scratched that and I went with just straight up Venmo, because somebody can, you can, almost like a skimmer at a gas pump, you can hack them. So, I didn't wanna, so I thought Venmo account might be the way to go.
Kevin, that's an interesting idea. It may not be Venmo specifically, it could be any sort of platform that is probably...
Well, to collect money now, because everybody says, well, how can I donate? We'll go home and go on the website and donate.
Have a phone.
As opposed to, I've got my phone right here to donate right now.
With you, with you. So, it might not be Venmo, it might be any...
Just out of curiosity, Mike, do we know how many Friends of kind of organizations
there are in town?
I know of several, I can't tell you how many there are, but the number that we associate...
Yeah, a way to coordinate that a little better.
No, but we can ask for money, you know, we do that through grant process and different things, right? We do accept donations.
No, I know that, I'm just trying to think of a way that...
And I do like, if there's somebody that wants to be able to do it, how do we create the infrastructure to do a on-the-spot donation? I know, I saw other municipalities do it through their parking meters, right? So, what they would do is they'd say, on this day, everything from, you know, when you go to park, it would go to this cause or whatever, so.
Did you have fun with your kids at the 501(c) park petting zoo today? Scan.
Right.
Yeah, do they do, do they do...
They earn it out right there.
Yeah, 100%.
It's a good idea.
I mean, just went to the Northern Rockwell Museum and there's like, in each room, they had a separate donation box.
Most of the people out of town.
And if you like it and you're there.
A lot of people from out of borough.
You throw a dollar in.
You'll do it later when you go.
And if enough people throw a dollar in, then you get some money.
Historical does that when they open up the home school.
Yeah.
They just have a bucket there.
Establish a permanent funding account source for K-9 program through PD assistance with things such as vet bills and other fees.
Correct. So K-9 Yoshi doesn't have any dedicated funding. Right now he has a small grant that's going to run out soon and a little bit from a community member that donated. He was out of work for five weeks, injured in training. So I don't know how those vet bills.
The dog?
Yeah. I don't know, a couple months ago. I don't know how those vet bills were paid.
Paid out of budget.
Okay.
The dog is budgeted into the police budget.
They already have it?
It's in the budget. So whatever the, the police came in, if the grant runs out, we pick it up and pay for it. So it's, it's part of the budget.
Okay. I was told otherwise. Okay. So I guess.
I'm just going to stick it here because what did this?
Just make sure.
Welcome wagon package, physical mail and email with coupons to local businesses and map with points of interest to welcome new residents and businesses.
So I brought that up last fall, like a welcome wagon type idea. I got one in the mail when I moved here. It had a map, some coupons for local businesses. I think Chamber Commerce used to do it. They don't do it anymore. I don't even know if they exist anymore. But instead of a physical mailing, maybe there's a way you can send somebody an email and like with a special code or something, they can access coupons to restaurants and map to all the points of interest in town. What about a calendar that lists all the events we have, even if they're not town events, it lists everything we have. Because we've got a lot going on in this town that I feel like not everybody knows about just from different groups and stuff. So I thought maybe a one page access to, so if you're new to town, hey, welcome to the town. Here's everything we have. Here's all the points of interest we have. We have the zoo. We have this. We have, you know, all kinds of stuff.
We definitely talked about that in one of our goal setting meetings for communication.
You brought this up before.
Yeah.
Before.
Yeah, I brought it. Yeah, but, but it's, but we're not doing it.
Kevin didn't much.
Ah, that's not.
He did. He did. And it was on an orange.
You are doing a lot of this stuff.
Listen, town manager Borg.
Very well, Councilor.
I didn't get a welcome package outlined to here on an orange post-it. Very nicely done, Kevin. Very nicely done. All right. Last but not least, climate, oh my God.
Resilient.
Thank you. I don't know why. I just paused on that. Develop flood mitigation plans that incorporate modern best practices.
I know we're doing that. We talk about, but the, each time we talk about dredging the river, there's a reason why people stop dredging rivers. So I know there's smarter people looking at it, but real, like really comprehensive flooding management, I would like to at least hear more about it.
I'm glad you said that. That's been, that has been on our goals for the last four years, I think, right? And we've been making good progress on it, but it didn't come up tonight. And I would, I should have put a sticky up there for that. Just to keep, just to keep it going, make sure we don't lose.
It is something we've had on there every year and every year we continue to add and make progress and bring in.
Some of it, everything I read is dredging actually is very destructive. So it's like dredging a river doesn't solve your problem. It actually exasperates it while, which is why it's got stuck.
But we've had so much sediment fill in the Ten Mile River that parts that were, you know, a couple of feet deep are now three or four inches deep. And so it brings up the, anytime we get a rain that's a one inch rain, it overbanks. So dread, it's, if there is a comprehensive strategy and back to earlier discussions, there is a regional approach because we can't do this, and this is what we've emphasized with both the Congressman, DEP, EPA, FEMA, Corps of Engineers, and all of our discussions is, we have to look at it from Plainville to the Narragansett, right?
Yeah. And like everything I read talks about, the more you dredge, the more it weakens the banks, the more the river collapses, the more the flooding is.
But a lot of our banks have were with TBA projects that were done in the 30s and the 40s. So a lot of our banks have been hardened, but they're just, they're filling up. So it, there, it does, I absolutely agree with you. It needs a comprehensive strategy, but it is something that, you know, Mark and the engineering team down at Public Works are working on.
One of the things that I've always put up here, and we've, I think we've always some way, some way, shape or form has been on this board, it's not tonight. And I think it's a line kind of what you're saying there, but it's, I think it's also a testament to progress we've made, is we're always talking about working better with our state and federal officials and communicating and getting, getting funds into town. And that didn't even come up this year. And I think it's because we've been successful at doing that.
Very much so.
So that's another thing that's like still, we want to keep doing, but like we've, we've accomplished a lot as far as that goes, right? And so anyway, just as an observation like that.
Well, and that's a good point. Now that we've seen all of these, is there anything that we feel like before we get down to calling things and bucketing that should be added before we go forward? That like, kind of like, oh wait, I didn't think of it that way?
I kind of just said mine. So you guys can, yeah. It's a good call. Any, anything that people thought of that?
Well, there's a bit on your idea with the website. It seems kind of silly and inconsequential, but I remember when in Board's Look, when all the members had their photo up on the website. People, people know what they look like.
Maybe we should have individual pictures.
There are definitely some things that you could change on the website, even.
Meet our staff.
Yeah.
And bios.
Yeah, even a small bio, kind of like what the papers do.
Well, like, kind of tying into your idea about getting more people involved, I think a simple thing to do would be to make sure that every board's page lists the terms of the current members.
Yes, I like that.
So that you know when a term is going to be up for, for election, because that might actually, because now somebody might, some of the pages I think have them, but I don't think they're across the board. So, you know, you might say, oh, I might be interested in running for the planning board. You don't know until January. And if you miss that window, which is a pretty long window, but not everyone is as tuned in as we are to this stuff. Whereas if they could see in advance, oh, this person, their term ends next year, this is the year after that. Okay, I'm going to plan to run for that one. Simple things like that. So kind of in your, yeah, I mean, none of that hurts for sure.
No. Transparency. We keep talking about transparency. So.
One of the things that's not up there that I thought about putting up there, but then it's sort of in the guise of, oh, we've made a lot of progress on it, but we probably shouldn't stop, is just the really proactive strategy with the abandoned slash contaminated properties. Because you don't want to take your foot off the pedal on that.
Infrastructure? Could that be?
It would be infrastructure. Uh, yeah, it's kind of.
One I wrote down, I didn't put up because it was six.
It's not new. It's just doing what we're doing, basically. But I wouldn't want to like de-prioritize it because now we're not talking about.
That's kind of what I have written down, but I was only allowed the five, so.
What did you say? Abandoned what?
So, Councilors, I would tell you, the ones that we already have and that we've been working with, we're not getting rid of those. We're still moving forward. We're just probably potentially going to lump some of these into some of the ongoing projects or expand them and create your own. So a lot of that stuff that we, we've been doing, it still falls in some of these categories and you'll still be able to track it and we'll give you updates on it. But, you know, what we'll do is from this is we'll take and we'll identify the new ones and start laying out the strategy on how to tackle it.
Okay. All right. Anyone else before we move to the next? All right. So we have now one, two, three, four, five, six, seven buckets. Can we consolidate these into?
You had five before.
I think the charter is separate.
Yep.
Just absolutely.
Yeah, that's its own thing.
All right. So now we're down to six.
I think personnel and good governance go together.
Yep. I'm not, I'm just putting them in the same bucket, not because they're next to each other for any other reason.
Some of the finance stuff could go in there too.
Yep. Yeah. I love that.
Or into econ. Yeah.
Yeah.
Which ones?
All right. Expand the strategy for ongoing health insurance management and where possible, make more.
Governance.
Yep. Establish a townwide donation platform. Install Venmo signs around.
Good governance slash econ, communications. That's all three.
Yeah.
It, it, there could be multiple, it could be last of three or four. We'll just drop it in a one bucket and you'll see it.
Establish a permanent funding account source for the K-9. Oh, we already said that.
That's good. Go put it up there. We'll, we'll track it.
Guys, I actually was thinking, I don't know if that's public safety specific, but we had a fire, we had two fire stations, we had that.
Staffing.
There could be a.
You put it with staffing for police.
I was gonna say, there could be a public safety bucket. I know we're not, we're trying to consolidate, but maybe, maybe not, maybe not. I'm just throwing it up there. Maybe it's better. Does it? So I guess my question is, do we have a public safety bucket?
I mean, I should.
I think that's part of good.
It's always a priority.
I see it with economic development too, because what towns struggle, when we talk about, we need another fight, we build, 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 but you've got the same resources trying to serve all those. And, you know, communities are successful and add a lot of housing. Well, it just stretches your police and fire that much thinner. So it seems like that's part of that to look at, what does it take to be fully staffed and have the resources they need to properly serve? And we're those thresholds where you have to grow those services.
Again, there's no, there, no particular project will have probably one category. And what I would tell you on the public safety one, Council President, in our previous list, you had safe, open, inclusive, resilient community. We had lumped public safety into a safe, open, resilient community.
Okay, I'm okay with this.
Okay, we're down to three people.
Four.
Four.
We put the design.
Yeah, but chat.
No, that's still a category.
Okay, but.
That's new. That's new for us. It's interesting. It's definitely a common theme. There's a lot of people that are interested in this topic.
I will say, I don't know if it needs to be added, but I, I just want to say, because I think I'm really proud of our town. When we talk about the opioid epidemic, what you just said, maybe the safe, open, resilient towns, how we treat our people is so important. How that, like adding the social work, how our police interact with our community. So it's not, you know, who's on the outside, are they going to be treated terribly? And who's being protected from whom? We're rather seeing everybody and the needs different and serving those needs. So I think we do a really good job with that. I don't, I would just want to, I don't know, put a check next to that to continue. I think the direction we're moving in is great. And not every community does that. So I don't know, it just made me think of a safe and resilient community and under our safety to, some of these things you don't want to, I don't think we'll stop if we don't mention it, but you don't want to, you don't want to low prioritize it and forget about it. When, you know, when then it comes up to budget and things need to be cut, things, those things sink to the bottom.
So I know, I know you're gonna, Council President, gonna assign these and tweak them. But here's what you had before. You had development stain, economic growth. You guys have talked economic growth up here for sure. And we had a thriving community, which we lumped in infrastructure and education into, right? Because we thought it was like, then you had the safe, open, resilient. Then you had good governance and then you had communications, public participation. So those were the five that you had before.
Do you stay with that, have a continuity and a lot?
No, no, I think, I think what you should do, right, and part of this role is, you should look at it and say, is this where, is this still the bucket we want to create? It's only, it's only a carry. Because what I'm going to do in, Councilor, can I borrow your marker? Because I, I think this is an important part that I want to share with the council members is, you all are making these priorities. And from there, you're turning, I call these goals and objectives, right? And what I'm going to do is I'm going to build this out in teams that a couple of you already have access to, right? And you'll see how we're communicating with them. But what I'm going to take all of this, and I'm going to give it to the department heads, and they're going to develop programs, right? And then tasks and actions that support it. So when you look at this, you see this, right? And you're looking here. What I see, and this is town council, right? This is your departments, the town manager and the departments. We're going to make these parts to fit and work all of it. That's what I'm going to give you feedback on. That's what I'm going to say, here's what we're doing and we're supporting. When we do a capital project, it might be supporting the fire station wherever it's at. If we're in budget, right, good governance, we're going to come back and say, hey, here's what we're going to, we're going to address this issue to make sure it's covered here. And then we'll use teams in the planner app to kind of lay it out. So department heads, when they get an update, you'll be able to see and how they track. So that, that's where, so the more fidelity that you get, I don't care what bucket you put in, that's just a category, right? But I think it's important. What I think though is, the more fidelity you give to me, the easier I am able to turn that into actionable program and specific items that departments can achieve.
I think what Mike is, one of the things that Mike has alluded to here is, is that if the goal that we put up here is vague, and the less specific that it is, the harder it is for him to put it into a plan. And so like, it's okay if some of our goals were a little bit vague and directional tonight, but like if you have specifics, I think that's good, that's good feedback it gives to Mr. Borg. He knows. Again, they all come up with their own programs and ideas too that align to these, but I think it's better for us to give some of that guidance.
I think what I'm really saying is, tell us what you want to accomplish. We'll figure out how to do it.
All right. So how about then for everyone, like, because last time you put everything into, like, once we identified into Excel doc, how about the people that were responsible for putting theirs up? Give a little more context in the next field to help.
You get that step however you want to, and I'll put it into teams, right?
Yep.
And it'll lay out the council linkage, it will lay out the department linkage, it will lay out a document repository for whatever's happening. It will lay out a way to converse and go back and forth with the department heads. I would ask you, please, that's in, you know, that's from programs down, that's for me, but you, I want to give you visibility so you can see it, right? But then you have access to say, hey, look, I have a question on X, Y, or Z. And at the end of the day, you can see the progress, right? And if you want to say, hey, we need to step on the gas and pick up the pace on this, absolutely. Okay. And then I might have to come back. But it's a, this is the, I think the interaction and what role I play with here in the town is to say to you, okay, this is your goal. Here's how we're going to do it. Here's how I'm setting this up for budget. While you all like to think of this as one year, I don't. I think of this as one, two, three, four, five years. There's some things on here that won't happen maybe for 10 years, but it doesn't mean it comes off the list and we're not still working for it. Some things we're going to say, I can't do this right now and I have to move it over. So this Wednesday, when I meet with all the department heads, I'm going to take all your stickies. And I'm going to say, hey, this one's Public Works. Mark, your team, tell me how you envision doing this. And then he and I will start having a conversation on how we can do it and then laying out the plan. This is why I would actually, and Council President, I said this to you last year, I'd like to come back in December and look ahead another year after that. Here's what we've done, but let's look another year ahead. Because I want, it's, it's hard for me to take this now and turn it into next year's budget. The more time I get to, because this is what, it will turn into the budget. This will be actually become the budget.
In the past, we've had a six month or we've had a checkpoint. We can, we can reset it if there's an appetite for it. So I think right now we have our goals. As for an action, who is going to, is Karen, are you able to transcribe this? Or do you want, like, or at least take a first pass at it? We'll take some pictures of it to make sure we capture everything. I don't want to end the conversation. I'm just starting to get in next test, but we can continue to talk. I think another action will be, well, let's make sure we think those are the four buckets that we want, right, directionally. And then a couple of us can kind of chart like, what does, what does charter mean? Just a quick definition. They're pretty, they're pretty self-explanatory. Like, that would be the title. It would just be like one sentence or two sentences, kind of describing like what we think we mean when we say charter enhancements, charter improvements, finance, whatever, some, stuff like that. We kind of come back with the next meeting with all that stuff mapped out as.
Yep.
I think another thing to keep in mind, and I think this was good when you said this, John, about making charter its own thing. Unlike most of the other items that are up there where there's a component, where we're, we're given the idea that the town manager and the department heads are going to take it and implement it. The charter is ours. That's like, that's purely legislative. Or, or the residents, but it's not.
Unless we don't want to follow up in stipends, then that's financial.
Well, but the stipends from a charter perspective are already there. We, we can vote stipends to other boards if we want to. That, that doesn't require a charter change. But any of the changes that are proposed, that's legislative. So there's not, there's not.
There is, there is some overlap. So when it goes to the process, right, and we're, one, I'm engaging KP Law, and then two.
Fair enough.
Right? And two, when, if you, if you agree to something and it goes to the ballot, I would have to fund.
Fund the election.
The elections to have the ballot initiative go forward. So that's what I'm saying. If, if.
We just have to craft all these changes so there don't need elections.
No, seriously.
There is a.
There's, there's minor changes and major changes. Some require.
And minor changes.
Craft them to be minor.
But, but I, I think the point that I would make to you all is, no matter what is, we're going to, we're going to work real hard to get this done.
Yep.
I turned this into the budget, right? Because it's, so with the budget we have this year, I'm working off of last year's list. So that's for this list. So this list is going to be budget in '27, right? Unless it coincides with something we're doing now, we can modify and, and chart the path. And we'll work that. We'll take that on our level and we'll show you how we're doing it. But this is why I think if, when you have this conversation, let's, can we have it again in, you know, December and then look 18 months out? And we can say, all right, now I can tee up the, the budget. I'll take this one and start working it, but now I know what you're working on for the next one, what the priorities, how it shifted. We can get a dipstick of what's going on and we can get a good idea. Because I need the budget to be able to action a lot of the things. Some of the things that if we can do, if they're administrative, of course we'll do, we'll figure it out and have it done. But those that require effort, time, people and money, those things have to be coordinated and it usually takes a budget cycle to get that into place.
Yeah. I mean, some of both and I get, but it's, but the, the economic development, like when you talked about consultant, I realize that requires money, but some of this might already be being done and I just don't know about it. But that really, I mean, I'm really, if we all, I'm really nervous about things getting lean over the next few years. So we need a really good, clear plan. How, what, how are we going to, how are we going to grow tax revenue? What does that mean about development? What's, what's realistic? What's, that kind of plan needs to be happening.
So you have, there are a couple existing documents that you have. There is the housing production plan, that's a part of it. You have the, the overall town plan that was done a couple of years ago. Yeah. Well, it was done within, it's done in the past five years. So it's still within the 10-year lifespan it's supposed to have. The other part, and I see Emerald Square Mall comes up a lot here. We discuss Emerald Square Mall every week here, right? It's, and until the town is the owner, and I'm not advocating the town, but there are owners that they're doing what they want to do because they own the property and they're trying to, so we're trying to set. I think one of the things that you'll see on here that you'll see me come back and ask for money is a complete rewrite of our zoning bylaws. And I will tell you, that's something Marie Cloner brought to me a couple of years ago, and we've been working towards it. So that's, you'll see all of it. There's, a lot of this is familiar and we're going, you'll see it and you'll say, okay, yeah, that fits right into what we were doing. That's how we're doing it. But for me to take it, if you say this now and you say, hey, I want to execute this right now, I'm going to say, no, I can't. That's next year's budget. What you're telling me today and putting on the board, I'm telling you is next year's budget. Because I, you're giving this to me three months into the current budget.
So a couple of things real quick. One, I think there's a mix here of things that will be, would need to be in next year's budget and other things that are, that are more immediate, that could be addressed. So that's part of this, this process that we're going to go through after we dissect all this. The other piece Mr. Simmons just told me about is that we're supposed to, I need to ask if anybody wants to take a vote to go have a recess mandatory per our rules. And I'm noting that we're. Anne, I'm noting that we're.
I could take.
We're going to go into executive session momentarily anyway, and in that case, we could actually provide a break.
Yeah, I could go.
So if you want a break, we can do it right now, it's okay.
Good.
Yeah, do I take a vote for it, can we just?
No.
No.
Are you coming back to regular?
Five minute break, and we're going to come back, is that okay? And then we're going to come back to a regular session, finish this off, and then we're going to go into executive session.
All right, we're back.
Oh. Welcome back.
I thought we would. So one of the things I was thinking about before we went to the break was, just like, and I'm sure it's been done, like, I haven't laid it, is there a current version of the master plan or some equivalent document to that in the last five years? It's just that concept of like, what's the vision for the town? Because nobody wants their taxes to go up, but then nobody wants any development, there's a housing crisis, but nobody wants any new houses. So it's like, so what, what do we want this town to be? Do we want it to be 1950s rural? Do we want it to be Route 9 industrial? Do we, do you know what I mean? I think we all probably have a similar vision for what it is, but it might be hard to just say, what do we want to be, right? Like, how much do we want to index on that balance between open space and development? How much do we want to index on commercial development versus residential development? How committed are we to, to, you know, like, keeping taxes low over time in the context of all of that? Because, like, you can't have nice things and not do any development and keep your taxes low, right? Like, they all go together. So I don't know what the process is to get there, but it sort of feels like, and I think about the charter, there's something like right at the smack front of the charter that says the council sets the vision for the town.
Yeah, and you have, you have.
So I was going to ask, like, what is, what is there? Is there a vision statement?
Yes, it's in the 2024 Strategic Priorities Planning Document that we're due, and it has mission, vision, mission, values, right? And it outlines some of the things, but it's something, it's a document that needs to be updated, and, you know, the council needs to put his hands on it and, you know, massage that until it becomes the product that supports getting all of this, right?
I assumed there was something, but it just sort of feels like we're missing, like, a step of like, what's the big picture? Who do we want to be?
That's, so, I hear that. And that's actually the genesis of this session, and why we've been doing it. And so, from a council perspective, it can be inferred, it's not necessarily fact, but like, that these buckets, charter, economic growth, good governance, communications, they're obviously our priorities, like, our vision would be something in here, it's like, you know what I mean? It's not fully articulated as our, as our vision, but these are some of those components, right? And I think this is an attempt to try to get us to that, but it's not a pure vision, to your point. And I think that would be incredibly difficult for us to get to.
Well, I think this is what we have to do, is like, I look at some of these ideas, I'm like, I don't like that idea at all. I don't want to do that. And, and so, and because it's sort of, it supports a counter position to what I see as the vision for the town.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean?
And so I think in the process, and Council President, what we've done in the past is, I will take this and say, here's what we're able to do. Is this, do we want to expend the resources to continue down this? Or does this move to, you know, out years, or maybe we just don't execute it? So what we'll come back with is, if this is going to get done, here's how we see it being done, here's what the time, people, and the money would require, and then maybe it just, the sticky comes off.
And if that document you said is there, right, and we've also kind of reviewed it, does it anchor back to that?
It did, and it should, and you should come back, and I, what I think you should do is, you should modify this to meet what you're outlining here, and make it work. And then as another way to vocalize and socialize what you think are the priorities and how to drive the task.
So like, to a degree, if there's a bad idea up there, or something that, no bad idea, but.
I don't even mean a bad.
Something that we don't all agree with, and we don't have consensus around, like, even though it's up there, if it's going to come forward, there's going to be a measure that we're going to have to vote on at some point, and we won't hold for it. You know what I mean? Like, so like, we do have that mechanism, right? Like, that's so.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not putting that, I think it's a good idea, but the vision is.
Can you send?
Yes, I'll send it.
Send any or send the council out.
Yeah, it's a good point, because I think, especially with this council, because of the number of candidates that ran in the last election, the group of us who were elected all had very similar platforms. Not identical, we had some differences.
Yeah.
But compared to some of the people who weren't elected, there were very clear differences. And so I think, kind of uniquely, maybe not since the first council, the voters voted for a vision. Now, I think you're right, Keith, that maybe we need a better, a more concrete vision, but I think, I think we're sort of aligned, we're seeing the town moving forward. The school vote was another thing, I think, that pretty clearly showed that the people, the residents are aligned with the idea of moving the town forward. They're not just focused on keeping their taxes low like they used to be. And we're, so we're in kind of a unique position, and I'm not sure the town really has been in before. But you're right, I think we should capitalize on that and make it more concrete.
I'm going to push back a little bit. I want to get stuff done. We got a year and a half, two years, to get stuff done, and like, if we can come up with a vision, that's, that's good, right?
But no help to it either.
I really want to get, I just want, I want to get our goals documented and have plans behind them and get stuff done, to me. So those, that, to me, that's the most important thing.
I hear that though, but I think it needs to be in parallel, right? Because if you just start running and doing stuff, and you're not thinking about whether it fits or not.
Can I ask though, why do you think?
I don't think we're saying that.
I'm not.
We're not saying.
But you just, I'm not, oh no, I'm genuinely asking, because you just said it, like, why would you think that, though, from what we're doing here? And based on what you just heard, we have a vision, we all ran very similarly in our platforms, a lot of what, I mean, there were similarities in some of the commentary here too. So why would you think that would be like, running? Do you get that impression from this, or?
No, I just said that things can happen in parallel, right? But I don't think you would, don't engage in a vision discussion because you want to get stuff done. I think those are two, they both happen, they both have to happen. And if, if you took that to the extreme, it would be like chasing squirrels, right? Good idea, let's do it, good idea, let's do it, good idea, let's do it. To your point, measures and finances, all those things meter it back, but don't you want to, like, be aligned around a picture of what the town's going to be in 10 years?
For example, we want economic, you know, we want economic development, we want new growth. Do we want to build in the area of the community garden? Or do we want that to be open space? Because everything here says, you know, economic growth, economic growth, smart development, but every time that we put a survey out to the town people, they say, open space, trails, walking, passive, you know, passive recreation. So I don't have any issue saying, I want economic development, I want housing projects, I want apartment buildings. I also don't want to touch.
Certain areas.
The community garden.
This is exactly my point.
I don't want to touch High Street. I, I want those areas to stay the same, but I want all this stuff done too.
Yeah, so John, that's exactly my point. Affordable housing is like the poster child of the point of trying to make, right? We all talk about it, it comes literally from the top of the country down, that affordable housing is like this massive issue, right? And, but then, Kelly Boulevard, all kinds of negativity around that. I'm sure there were people bristling when you were talking about the opportunity.
Yep, John Deitch.
So do we support that kind of growth? I think we do, given your context, right?
But I could just add to that, because it's both and. So big developments always get communities, because this, you know, you always get community in uproar, and then eventually it becomes part of the community. So you can't just say, well, some might not like it, so we're going to leave everything like it is, then you just, inevitable taxes are going to go up, and people hate that too. So it's not just growth, full speed ahead, let's just build, 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 but it's not even, to me, it's not concrete, it's intentionality. What kind of things, and we have to reach out, and how, who we, how are we connecting to attract, what kinds of things, what kinds of commercial things do we want to build? More housing is going to impact infrastructure. Warehouses just sit there and they eat up a lot of land and don't necessarily go up in value. Some things do, I mean, once upon a time, now it's sort of collapsed, but all the rage was labs. Labs were awesome, because they had to replenish all their equipment all the time, every year, and every year the value of the business would go up, and the footprint never changed, and that increased revenue would never put more kids into school, because that wasn't what it was. So like, those were great, but then that whole market's kind of collapsing. So what kinds of things, you know, and then intentionality, that's, I loved, at one point you talked about a skating rink, I've seen, like, those sports complexes with hotels, where we're right outside of Providence, Providence is expensive, could we, you know, something like that, be used, what land do we have to develop that isn't going to be on top of areas that we don't want it there? So we have to maximize, what's the investment? And how do we attract that? Because we don't have control over what's built necessarily, how do we attract the people that are looking to build those things?
But you do through zoning bylaws.
Because we're in, we're in awesome location, this is, people should be fighting to be here.
I would, you know, Council Vice President, here's what I would tell you. I agree that a vision is what I see that glues all of these priorities that you have here together. It gives it purpose and meaning, right? It's just another direction. I, I think you can tackle it, right? But I think you also have to spend the time to come back and look at it and say, all right, does this still feel right?
Totally.
Right, and do it. So, and this, I think, in the charter, part of my job is to help, you know, facilitate these discussions and help that, and I'm willing to do, I mean, that's what we did on this one back in 2024. So I think it's, it's time again to crack it back open, right? You're a brand new council. We can, it's something that, you know, it sounds like you volunteered to do this, so.
I'll definitely.
I'm not signing you up for it, but, but I agree with you, because I see it as, you know, we can just make these silos, right, and we're going to work in it. My job would be trying to bust them down to see how the departments do, but also give somebody that's outside looking at us, hey, when you're buying North Attleboro, this is what you're getting, right? It's part of that marketing package that Council Slaboga brings up every year, right? Every year, right? And we're working on it, we're branding, we're doing all kinds of stuff, so, but I think, yeah, we are, look, this is a council that you have a lot to be proud of. You have done more in the terms that you've been here than in the past 40 years.
I'd make a motion to extend the time of the meeting for 20 minutes.
Motion in a second to extend any discussion. You're not, it's Thursday. I oppose the extensions. All right, we have, we have some priorities, we have our goals listed out, we have the idea of potentially weaving them together, coming up with a vision. I think we can continue that discussion.
Yeah, you have a vision, I just say revisit it.
So did you want to, you had mentioned this too, Justin? Like, I just put this down as a note, that you want, as we dissect this, then we categorize them as this year's budget, possibly next year's budget, is that what you wanted to do at another time?
I think our next step is, we, is, one part is with Karen and Mike, where particularly Karen right now, just to kind of document these, right? And that's the first step, right? And the next step that's concurrent with that is, a couple of us go back, take charter, economic growth, good governance, communications, and just put a little bit of meat behind them, like a sentence or two, whatever, what do we mean when we say charter, what do we mean when we say these things? Bring those back to the council. If we, again, this is, this is a question of Mike, like, if there's time in the next couple of weeks to start to put them into like a grid where, you know what I mean? And start to dissect them, that's great, I don't want to put a false timeline upon me for that.
Council President, this is, I don't think you can answer that question yet, because I need to take it to the department heads. We need to see what fits into this year already, what we're doing, right? What we'll say can go in that, I think that's an answer I owe you, right, as a part of this process.
So those are the immediate next two steps? I'd love to continue the conversation about the vision. I just think I'm probably overly pragmatic at times, right? And kind of just focused on, we're not paid, and this isn't our full-time job, and how much can we actually accomplish, and what can we get done? And so that's, that's where my concerns are with that, but I feel like, let's, like, let's talk about that and figure out how we can pull together a vision. And if we like it, we can go put work in, that's fine. So I think that's it. Does anybody want to? I would raise my hand to define charter, economic growth, and good governance. Would anybody want to do that with me?
I'll help you. I'll do it with you.
It's okay, we, more can do too.
I've already started compiling a list based on the charter review committee report and some other conversations that I've had with different people on potential charter changes, so I'm, I'm happy to put more meat on that, if you like. I've already got a good start on that.
Thank you, yeah, send it over. That works. So if anybody else feels strongly about it, just send me an email, we can, we can do it too. I think for the next meeting, we just want to make sure we have something that we can, we can talk about and vote on, kind of.
Do you want, I don't, because I was on that meeting, do you want to collaborate on, Anne, on behalf of the War Department?
And we're, and we're involved too, so.
Perfect.
Awesome. All right, that's it.
Good. All right. Thanks, guys.
Good job, guys.
Good stuff.
Thank you, Karen and Mike. Tony too, for your support.
I'm down there.
This is your chair, right?
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll take a vote on going into executive session.
So want to just do in this format?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me just make the motion.
Are we going to stay over there?
You have the mic.
Are we staying over there?
No, we're just going to.
Yeah.
I moved under Master on Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A-1, to move. to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. And we will not, we will adjourn directly from executive session and will not return.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Point, second. Mr. Donovan, sorry, discussion, hear none, Mr. Point, it's roll call though.
Yes.
Mr. Stell? Yes.
Oh, well, I'm tired.
I'm tired, I'm tired, tired. Mr. North Harley?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
I just, I have a yes. We are, the motion passes 9 to 0, and we hereby end executive session and will not be returning into open session. Thank you, everybody.